I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting, December 8. And second?
Second.
Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of December 8? Not all in favor of approving the minutes of December 8, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of December 22 special meeting.
So long.
22nd. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. You now have presentation petitions, communications, notices, and general question period members of the community. First thing I'd like to do is present the holiday contest awards. First place went to Tom and Neil Oden. Congratulations, very good job.
My dad can't be here, but he has something to say. I'd like to thank the village for being recognized on my efforts for this year's display. I and my family spent about sixty hours as someone in the council, the dummy, and all of their lights over the course of the month. I'd also like to announce that I withdraw from the competition next year as I would like to see more families participate and be recognized as I have for the past three or four years. Thank you.
Thanks.
Second place this year went to Clarence and Sharon Potry. Keep the job.
I agree, a lot of kids, people do it. Our street's pretty good. You know, in years they come up, but I don't know about, you know, some of the other parts of town, they're only the right.
There was a lot less, a lot less this year. A lot less homes this year.
And third place went to Bobby and Debbie Olina. Now if you're taking, we'll bring that up.
Maybe you guys could give lessons in decorating. Do a workshop in October.
Oh, I paint all summer.
It's amazing though. Characters escape.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone? Here it was.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you next year we're stepping it up.
Okay, well, we'll be in competition. We're gonna get that whole village doing it.
Well, Bobby's here excepting for Bob and Debbie. Good job. Are there any communications from the community at this time? Just give your name and your address.
Kim Santillo, 192 South Street. Just water bill, questions about the water bill.
Okay.
I had sent you a letter, just we had a high water bill and I just got my explanation from Donna this morning about why, but I just, a couple of questions in learning, you know, why the bill was so high. Why do we estimate the water bill? And how come you don't, I mean, and I'm not trying, you know, to not understand, but if I had known that the water bill was estimated and then at the end of the year we were playing catch-up or whatever the term was used, then I wouldn't be so upset about having a $400 water bill. But I didn't know, and if the meter was my responsibility and if there was a meter issue, I didn't know. Nobody said anything to me. So, and that's, you know, just a couple of questions and I was wondering.
I want to defer this to Ian and Donna. Some of the reasons sometimes like a wire comes loose and he doesn't read. I think, I think in this case, from what they tell me is that the meter reading gun wasn't, for some reason it didn't pick up the signal correctly. I'm not positive, but I think that's what happened in this case. We try, try to keep the meters, you know, good repair because of previous issues.
There were two concurrent readings that were estimated and I didn't know that. I, you know what I mean, I had no idea. So I was just, you know, just wondering, I mean, that would be, I guess, a six-month period because it's every three months, right, that we get our water bill?
That's not ideal, yeah.
So I just, yeah, I'm just curious as, you know, why, you know, it was estimated two times in a row. If, you know.
I think it was they're having trouble reading it, but Ian, can I clarify that?
On the... If we can go all the way back to '07, and there's a few incidents, there was three estimations prior to what we are currently today.
In February was when I had replaced the pipes. So anything before that, honestly?
February 08.
It shouldn't really matter before that because it basically took care of itself.
Right. I didn't own the house though till last December, so it would only be the 2008 ones that I'm, you know, that I'm asking because the other ones before that I was paying the rent and I was responsible for them, so.
Okay.
I didn't question, you know, anything.
Well, an estimation, for instance, on...
Well, let's start with March because that you...
'08?
Yes, because that would have affected the three previous...
Right, that was when, that was when the first estimate was $64, I believe you said.
Right, and the reason because that can, when they did the, the reading for the April billing, which was the March 28 one, the note they had on the card was that it was broken, okay? So, um, normal procedure is that...
Broken the reader?
The reader, which...
Not the meter.
Not the meter, okay.
But they don't say that on here.
Right.
So there's no, normally not any way for me to know that, other than something's not working.
Right.
So we went ahead and estimated that reading, which, go back over here, sorry. We did estimate the April 1 reading, which was for 23,000 gallons. And so when we came to do the reading for the next billing, again, the reading they got on the, the reader was the same as the previous reading. So that could mean a couple of things, but normally when that happens, we don't do any usage. We let the meter catch up because it might have been read estimated high. The computer might have estimated it high, so we, we let it catch up to make sure that we're not overcharging you as I explained to you earlier today.
You guys were great when I, you know, asked you to help me out, so.
Okay, so...
Like I said, a couple of questions come up after you, I've spoken with you this morning.
So the July billing, actually you had no usage charged, as I explained, you only had the service charges for the, for the July billing. Then when we came to do the October 1 billing, again, the reading was the same. So then we said, well, something's not right. The reader, either the reader or the meter is not working correctly, but we know there's people in there, there's somebody living there. And Larry was able to get a reading on July 9, an actual reading. And so that's the figure that I used for the October billing. Unfortunately, between that one and the previous one where you had no usage charged, they will, those were actually, were billed lower than you probably should have been. So when we came to do the next billing, it was an actual reading done that they, they were able to read and that's where the high reading came in. It's already water that you've used, but you were not billed for previously is what's happened. Now we do have, I thought of this a little while ago, you were concerned about, you know, paying the bill. Normal procedure is this bill, the shut-off notices go out the middle of February and we usually give another week and a half.
I'll have my income tax by the end of the month, so, but thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm just saying, you really have about, about six weeks to pay it, so.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm sorry for the mix-up.
Well, no, I just, I just needed a couple of questions answered, that's all. I appreciate it.
Until I had a chance to really review it, but that's, as far as I, my feeling is there's nothing wrong with the meter, but that's your problem to...
Right, yeah, now, the meter is, is our responsibility even though we don't have access to it. You had said that to me the other day when I had asked if we could replace the meter. How does that work?
He must have talked to Ian about the meter, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I asked Ian. How does that work?
Well, now, I guess what I was referring to was the cost of the meters, about $140 to have it replaced. It would be a cost that you believe the village would incur to have it replaced, but...
I would even be willing to pay for half of one if you wanted to get a new one.
No, but like I explained then is, the, the big problem with meters is it's the, the reader touchpad. That seems to be the biggest problem. The actual mechanism of the meter reader, it's magnetic and as it spins, it's got a magnet in there and that magnet spins around and it makes that contact every time. And that makes the meter move and it calculates those gallons based on how many times it spins. And like I mentioned before, if your meter were functioning wrong or improperly, it wouldn't, it wouldn't prevent the accurate amount of reading. So, it'd be to your benefit.
Right.
And if we went in there and we put a new meter in there, it would cost us, us, $140 to put a new meter in.
Well, I was only questioning it just because I knew the previous owner before, my landlord, and he said it was replaced in 1995, so that makes it like 13 or 14 years old. So that was the only reason that I even mentioned, you know, the meter issue.
Yeah, well, that's a good point that they are old, but generally...
Not wear and tear, and I understood, you know.
When they wear and tear, they gain in your benefit.
In my benefit, okay. Well, I didn't know, like I said, that's why I'm here.
We've had a few residents, or not, we had a McDonald's incident a few years back and they wanted a calibration on their meter. And the calibration would actually increase the accuracy of the meter because it was out of calibration a little bit. And we would get more revenue out of them, meaning they would have to pay a higher bill.
Right.
So they were like, wait a minute, we don't want to pay for the calibration, things of that nature. So, I always caution residents that, that want a new meter put in, if they believe that the meter is bad, the actual meter, not the reader, but the meter. You should be cautious that you may get a higher bill than what you anticipate because it may be more accurate.
Right.
Which are, you know, it's a loss of revenue on our part. If it is bad, generally, they're a pretty simple unit, not a lot of work in part.
Right, I understand that.
Kim, one thing to note on the bill too, if it is estimated as a big E, I didn't recognize it either, mine had been estimated for a year before I realized.
No, mine has an A, yeah, mine has an A in front of it for actual.
That's actual, right.
Yeah.
Well, I know you, you were, I know you only purchased the home in February.
No, I purchased it in December, I just replaced. I'm just trying to do smaller repairs, you know what I'm saying? And the only thing I did was so far was just replace the insides of the pipes and ripped up the floor because the pipe was leaking under the sink, which made a huge mess.
And like Donna had mentioned, three previous readings were estimated.
Right.
Prior to that.
Right. But that was when I was renting, like I said, and...
Right, March of '07 was the flood, March of, that big flood we had. And then again, December, we had that snow, it was two feet of snow, we couldn't do anything. And then that following March, it was estimated again.
You've got a copy of this, right? The card?
Right.
Yes, yeah, I have.
Well, I went through, because it's easier for me to understand it this way, and like you changed from 21, 19, 18, 32, 20, 20, how it went up each time.
Right.
So when you didn't read it, I just added 20 to each of those to see what you were going to end up at the bottom. And actually, you should have ended up in December at 686 and you were at 677. So had it been added, you know, 20 to each time, so I don't think you have a leak anywhere. It came out perfect as you got hit with a huge...
Well, see, and I, that's what I said too, because if I had a leak, I did, I would believe that my water pressure wouldn't be as good as it is. I'd have a skating rink on the side of the house and none of those things, you know.
And we told you that when we, when we inspected the meter, that there's, there's two, there's two meters on there, there's two red dials on there, one big one and then a little tiny, tiny one. If that little tiny one's spinning and you know for sure you're not using any water in your home, that's a telltale sign that you have a leak, leaky toilet, leaky faucet.
Well, I had done the tablet, I had picked a tablet up for me last year, whatever, when we first did, when I first replaced the pipes for the same thing, but it was, you know, we did the pipes and that was...
I have, again, Larry read it the other day and it looks like you're pretty much on track.
Yeah, that's what you said this morning.
That's a good thing, and I said, I don't believe anything's leaking or anything like that, but...
Well, that would make sense to me though about the, the whole catch-up thing if you estimated it, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like I said, I finally had a chance to really review it after, between the phone calls and you talking with Ian and everyone, so, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, don't be sorry, you know, I just had that, you know, I didn't understand mine until I spoke with you this morning, I thought. But if you don't mind, can I stay or do you want to...
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, I've never been to one before and this is very nice. Thank you.
You might, you might change your mind in a half an hour.
How long, yeah, how long do you guys do your meetings for?
Well, maybe even a half.
Well, that was nice with the, with the certificates, that was great, I thought that was nice. Okay, I'll leave one, thank you.
Now the report, Mike Taterell, codes enforcement?
Well, it was pretty quiet last month, as you're all aware. Mr. Patterson finally did tear his building down after a short extension, so that's down. What's left there is going to stay, according to him, is tearing the rest of it down. As long as the roof stays on and the building stays boarded up, we really don't have much of an issue. Other than that, I do inspections of the mall, places coming and going, but nothing great. First challenge to report, really.
Don't have to worry about the lawns this time of year, right?
No.
Thanks a lot, Mike, I appreciate that. Do you have any questions for Mike? Okay, well, proceed with Mayor's report. I want to thank Twin Town True Value Hardware for the donation for the ice rink. We had a cost savings on the flood insurance premiums. We changed to preferred status because we hadn't had any claims recently on it. We have the 2009 schedule of training. Juanita and Ian, if you have any training that you think needs to occur, we have the schedule now, so. That's the near state. I think it's mostly public works, but anyway, if there's somebody you need to recommend or anything on that, just let us know in the future. We will need to schedule budget workshops that will begin this month. I'm asking everybody to stay after the meeting so we can pick a time, improve our schedules. We are seeking quotes for the security system for the village offices and garage. Hopefully we will have something maybe by next month. And I just want to remind everybody, Time Warner Cable will be closing their office, the end of February, so we won't be able to pay your bills there anymore. I believe you'll have to mail them in.
Kenny's.
Kenny's is going to still do that? Okay. I know when you call in for a service call, it goes to someone far away. Okay, that's, that's all I had. Trustee Chombley?
Just wanted to congratulate again the decoration winners. It's awful nice to see the people in the village getting involved in the, in the holidays and decorating their homes so beautifully. It's nice to drive around and see that. I wanted to tell Ian that the crew is doing a nice job of keeping the roads clean through the, the previous storms that we've had.
Thank you.
The roads have been in good shape and looking forward to getting the budget underway and also starting to think about, even though we have a lot of snow, paving projects for the summer. So, start carrying on for that.
Thank you, Kim. Trustee Martin?
Shared services meeting. The committee interviewed two engineering firms to complete the shared municipal services study. The next meeting opened to the public, January 20th, in the village office, 4:45. I'd like to thank Mike and Juanita for organizing, keeping the process moving forward, taking a lot of time, a lot of effort on your part. I know Tom and I both, I think we feel that way. Skating rink, ready for use down on River Street. Thanks to Ian, the village workers getting this, getting this community asset prepared to use, for use. We still need some volunteer efforts to keep the rink ready, ready for use as the weather permits. Keeping the snow cleaned off and, excuse me, keeping the snow cleaned off and ready for everyone to use it. I guess that's it. It seemed like I spent a lot of time here this month.
I wrote it to you every time I come over here.
Not a whole lot, I forget.
Thanks, good. Trustee Chombley?
I love the report, it's all here. Reiterating the shared services committee and I agree. Thank you for your time, Mike and Juanita. Glad to see the skating rink up.
It's nice there, it's a good spot.
Thanks, Tom. Trustee Gary?
We have a date for our village-wide quadricentennial celebration, will be August 2nd. It's the biggest thing. Lots of discussions with personnel over different things throughout the month, been very busy with all of that.
Thanks, Ian. Okay, we'll have the report from the clerk treasurer.
Everyone's been copying with the December expense and revenue reports. And we had a water and sewer billing, January 1st. Our water billing was $50,589.3. And sewer was $72,874.72.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Now entertain a motion to pay the warrant.
Suits?
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Any more aye? Let out a report with the superintendent?
I'd like to, I'd like to echo what the board members have said. The guys have, have really put forth a lot of effort on the roads. I'd like to point out more so this, this past week for the services that were conducted for Taniwa Plant. Celine Puckett also gave us permission to plow off her land in the park to allow for more parking, to make it much more convenient for people closer to Clark's. That was a pretty nice gesture for her, so I'd like to say thank you on her behalf. Ice rink, it has been built, it's been flooded several times. There's a good layer of ice, but like Mr. Martin had mentioned, volunteers would be truly welcome to, to come down there and help shovel it off in the weekends or in the evenings and stuff to get that few inches of snow and, and just maintain it that way. Security system, Jeff, you had mentioned that. We're meeting this Wednesday with a security, one particular security system. Just to get back into looking at that, I know we're looking at the new fiscal year for our new budget. Maybe we should entertain some, some new systems. A simpler access system to minimize the amount of keys and stuff that everybody seems to have to carry and reduce that accountability for those items. The front-end mower. Again, thank you for allowing us to purchase that, I greatly appreciate it. It was built and finalized last week, either sometime this week or mid next week, we should receive it. And then we'll get a little OJT, the guys from NorTrax are going to come up and give us some training on it, just to familiarize us with its functions. It's pretty simple, it's not so complex. So hopefully we'll get that out in the streets. Tobacco. Last year we budgeted for new tires, so it's definitely in need for some repairs as far as tires and natural wear. So if we get that out there, we can do a little more, help clean up them streets. That's really about all I have.
Okay, thanks, Ian. I just wanted to comment that the sidewalk's been kept up very well so far also. It's appreciated.
I have to contribute that to Mr. Link, he's really, he really does a good job of that and it depends on the snowfall and how it all lies, but he's really good at that. Sometimes we have to blow them, sometimes we just keep plowing, plowing. So he, he definitely steps up and takes that under his wing as his responsibility.
Thanks, do you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick with the ice rink, can we get a sign at the end of the street saying ice rink open? We used to have it on the main street and we may still have it in the back garage, but so local kids, they'll shovel themselves. They just need to know that it's there and where it's at, because it's hard to tell with all the snow we have that it's other than. We went out this weekend as a family and checked out, the kids were all excited that it was there because we've got a few school days off coming up.
In January, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of three-day weekends here and then the big vacations, so. Just a sign, skating rink open at the end of the street on the left, I don't know, whatever, until people start knowing. And once the word is out, the kids will spread the news and we'll be fine.
I would like to add one thing to that, if you don't mind, namely, the old skating rink.
Hut, is that movable?
Hut. I'm working, while we had a little snowstorm, so I'm a little delayed, but I was working with Carl Smith at Peterbilt and he's going to allow us to borrow a trailer, load it up and haul it down there. To move it any other way would kind of be destructive, so he's gonna, he's gonna work with us and allow us to borrow a trailer and help us out with that. So, all preemptive, thank you to Carl for...
Still in good, not sure if you can move?
Yeah, but it doesn't have the skids on the bottom like I get, it used to. I don't know, I don't recall the skids on it, but, but even if it had skids today, you certainly wouldn't want to drag it down the road. When we get around local in that area, it'll be fine, but to keep it structurally sound, it needs to be trailing, so we'll just load it up and haul it down there, so it's good to go.
That'll help, the kids will see that too, when they'll...
We'll get Northeastern's hockey team after, they'll keep it clean. Can you move it?
Thanks, Ian. Juanita, do you read the correspondence?
Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding requests for capacity development program survey. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding results of micro particulate analysis on wells 2 and 3. Correspondence from Patrick Miguel requesting copy of minutes from the August 13, 2008 zoning morgue appeals public hearing. Correspondence from New York State D.C. regarding snow rule of disposal sites guidance. Correspondence from Stafford's, Owens, Curtin, and Trombley regarding Mr. and Mrs. Robert Luckett. Correspondence from New York State Gas and Electric regarding streetlights. Letter to Perma regarding working compensation coverage. Letter to Civil Service regarding new positions, duty statement for water and wastewater maintenance worker 2. Letter to Curtis Lattimore advising him of the board's decision regarding insurance for 2009. Invitations to 2008 holiday contest winners. Correspondence from TV Bank regarding the Erie multiple letter of credit. Correspondence from Time Warner Cable regarding their office in Ross's Point. Correspondence from ISO regarding building code, efficient effectiveness, grading, schedule, classification results. Correspondence from Civil Service regarding new positions, duty statement for water and wastewater maintenance worker 2. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding water operator training. Correspondence from Beth Kessel regarding snow falling complaint. Correspondence from the Chauvin Agency regarding insurance policy changes for three sewer plant buildings. Correspondence from Kim Santillo regarding her January 1, 2009 water sewer billing memo from Deputy clerk Arco and history of his account. Thank you, letter to Twin Town True Value Hardware for their donation for the ice project, ice rink project.
Thanks, Juanita. This one, old business thing, I want to take care of this one. I've got a recommendation from the board to refer the zoning request regarding the old elementary school for the zoning board for the recommendation back to us. I just would like to make a motion to approve that.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, they also mentioned that the Locust Street area would be another one to review also. Is that residential, but most of the, there's a lot of businesses in that area, is that right?
What it's on here?
Right, but the motion only included Elm Street, I thought.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the Elm Street, or the Locust Street.
Locust Street, you have the former independent products out there, the old Agway Building, the Arringers, there's parts of a warehouse. There's three or four commercial uses that are all in a residential zone. And each time somebody rents one of these spots or changes ownership and the use changes, there are use variances required, which is... spots or changes ownership and the use changes, their use variance is required, which is supposedly the hardest type of variance to apply for.
Has somebody requested that or?
No one has requested it, but if you're gonna look at the Elm Street, it's the same issue. I just thought that you might wanna, I mean, I'm not saying it needs to change. I just think that it used to be looked at and talked about.
Okay, well, we could ask for a recommendation on that also. Uh, do we have a motion on that yet?
Sure. I'll make a, uh, motion to review the Elm Street and Locust Street, uh, zoning regulations by the zoning board to refer back to the village board for approval.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Does anyone else have any old business?
Which is?
True fact, that's new business.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Good night. Have a good night.
Thank you.
This was last month.
I have two things on our old business.
All right, well, let's, uh, okay, we'll, we'll deal with that under old business thing. Okay. Dude, I guess it was brought up. Uh, Amy, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I would like to recommend that the purchase of the Jet Track system, uh, it costs us sixteen hundred eighty-four dollars for four units. Uh, that does not include installation. However, in talking with, uh, people who have purchased it, the installation was so simple. They said step by step. They gave you the instructions. Uh, so we have a savings there in installation. And then the annual equipment, um, the annual cost monthly fees, um, for reporting is fourteen forty for four units, uh, giving us a total of thirty-one twenty-four the first year. Uh, but we also receive a twenty percent discount on our monthly fees if we pay it in full, which is what we would do anyway. So we'd get twenty percent off of that.
That's good.
Yeah. So, and I spoke with a couple people and, um, actually, um, the police chief from Johnstone, um, spent quite some time, almost too much time with me.
Could you make a motion, Amy, and then we can discuss?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the purchase of four Jet Track tracking devices for the village at the initial cost of three thousand one hundred twenty. Oh, it's not, cause it's a discount. It was a total. I printed up and left it.
Fourteen plus a thirty? Fifteen twenty-nine, is that correct?
Is it twenty percent off?
I printed up and left it.
Fourteen forty?
Twenty percent off the, um, the monthly fee, which was fourteen forty. It, it varies. That was the other thing. I'm sorry. We have to discuss it. So let's just say the, for the purchase of four Jet Track units at this point, and then we'll discuss it.
Okay. Well, we have three units per unit, right?
Right, number of four units.
Okay, so that, you wanna read back any motion?
It sounded like change of motion to purchase four Jet Track units. That's all I have is motion.
Right. And I'll explain as we discuss.
Okay, uh, can I have a second?
Need a second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Okay. Now, the reason it can vary is, you see, the, um, depending on how frequently we want reporting or gaps in our reporting, every ten minutes means there's gonna be a ten-minute window. Say, for example, right now at, uh, seven oh five, between now and seven fifteen, it would be a blackout. We wouldn't know what's happening in those ten minutes until seven sixteen, when it would come up and tell us what happened in those past ten minutes. Okay? I don't think we need any quicker reporting than that. Um, so we could go with the twelve ninety-five pricing, which brings it down less for us. The hundred twenty-four thirty-two is three units that she had, um, given me an estimate for, um, which we obviously would add one more unit to that if we wanted to go with four units, which would cover the pickup truck, the two pickup trucks, the van, and the plow.
Yeah, I think that covers, that's all we have, I think.
So I don't think, that was the only discussion for us, depending on how quickly you want the time. I mean, if we had, we're living in a dangerous situation or, you know, a high, um, crime rate and whatnot, where, you know, all of a sudden our, our vehicle disappeared and for their safety, we didn't know where they were, you know, a two-minute thing would be recommended. Uh, the police station goes with the ten minutes and he says it's more than enough.
You just go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's probably why it costs more.
Right. And this comes right to your computer, um, gives you monthly, so many different kinds of reports, however you want it. You could view it satellite. You could view it by the street. Um, it views idle time, um, as well as speeds.
Which computers are going to?
Could go to any of our computers.
It's a web link actually, if I'm not mistaken.
So you can set it up who you want authority to look at these?
Put a password onto that web link.
Right. Okay. But great, great references. They were thrilled and it was the cheapest device, so yay.
Okay. Are there any, uh, other questions?
Any of you have a total roster to give us?
Twelve people, I'll tell you right there in two seconds. I handed it home and I apologize. I left it.
That was my question. Who would install it? Is that what you asked?
Yes.
That's a good question. Any of you guys have good, you know, wire abilities? Six twenty-four minus twenty percent, so that would be, uh, that I do not have an answer to who would install it. Um...
Can we install?
Yes, we can. And he said, the police chief had one of his guys do it, um, cause he did it all undercover. And, um, he says it's really been a good time, cause it's still on the hush-hush. We can't figure out how he's getting all these things, but, um, he just handed the guy the instructions and he put it all in.
It's pretty safe. We can do it.
You have faith. I, I was, some of the, I was trying to, I gotta, can't say.
So, I thought, I thought you had given a price at the end, was thirteen thousand or something?
Three one four.
Three one four. Is that, that would be, uh?
It's sixteen eighty-four for the units and then the service, if we go with the cheaper one now, it's thirteen times forty units would be fifty-two a month, times twelve months would be four, ten, two, five, four, two, six twenty-four minus twenty percent, which would be a hundred and twenty-four, minus a hundred twenty-four, zero, zero, five. So five hundred is gonna be our annual thing for doing this.
Okay, it sounds pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
It's fifty-two dollars one for all four units?
For all four units. Thirteen dollars a month per unit. Twelve ninety-five per month. For multiplication purposes, without a calculator. And I do apologize. I had it all figured out unless it, visitor just before I left and I left it on the counter. Does that make sense?
For four units.
Twelve ninety-five per unit? Doesn't, doesn't come up with fifty-two, I don't think.
Thirteen times four is twelve, fifty-two.
Thir- oh, thirteen, oh, okay.
Times twelve months, so five hundred dollars.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? The thought, uh, trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mary Moore, aye? Okay, is there any further old business?
Amy has got some.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd love to just bring up a quick tidbit about the GSA meter.
Oh, I wanted to.
We had a, uh...
Okay, I forgot.
Pardon?
Yeah, I wanted to bring that up on the report and I forgot.
We were fortunate, a gentleman from, uh, one of our vendors who, who frequents here a lot and we get a lot of meters from these, this company. Uh, he stopped in the other day and, uh, Jeff was here, just happened to work out perfect. Um, the discussion was the GSA meter and they are willing to, excuse me, to, um, put an electronic read meter on there. Um, kinda like what we talked about before with the radio frequency meters. You just drive by and collect that data real fast. Uh, so they're gonna volunteer and put one on for us and they're gonna read it for like two months. And they're gonna calculate that data on, on a spreadsheet so we can record the volumes of water that flow through that meter. Now, it's a high-flow meter that's originally put in there. Currently, right now, it's a high-flow meter, so it only picks up on twenty-five to thirty gallons a minute. But we believe that there's a lower flow that flows through that meter. And if it is a lower flow, it won't be detected by the current meter that we have.
So you're saying it only detects anything above twenty-five gallons in it?
Correct. Accurately.
Right.
Accurately. It will collect in, 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 um, it's like analog right now. That meter that's in there, that meter will pick up through that analog, kind of some percent of the low flow that's going through there, but not accurately. A radio frequency system, donated, volunteered, it's free for right now, no big deal, no attached at this point. No, no funding needed. Uh, to collect a database that tells us that there is a low-flow system going through there, which will then in turn, in the future, give us an idea whether or not we really need to get a compound meter to pick up high and low flow, or can we just stay with the standard high-flow meter? So I'd just like you guys to be aware that, that we are looking into the system. They're gonna help us out and get us, uh, digital print out of, a footprint of what really goes on there for like a two-month period. So when we do our final budgeting and stuff like that, if we move towards a more compound meter in next year's fiscal year, we will have that data information to back our reason behind a compound meter. That we will...
Yeah, it was, it's not gonna give us the reading. It's gonna tell us if there is motion there when the high flow isn't registering. It won't give us an accurate reading, but it'll tell us if water's going through there. You know, it'll give us a heads up.
The low flow, it won't give accurate. High flow will.
So it'll just give us, you know, an idea with it, cause the, the compound meters are very, very expensive. It'd be good to know if, you know, if it would make sense to do that or just continue what we're doing. Yes, I'm guessing around, what, eight, eight thousand dollars for the compound meter? Well, that, that's just the meter that's not installing at this rate. So, you wanna make sure that there's a, a real need for it before we do that.
Would the village have to purchase that meter if it got that far, or would GSA be responsible for that?
Well, normally, yes, but we, we're the ones that specked out that high-pole meter that really wasn't the right meter. They, they bit the bullet and paid for that. Uh, really hate to ask them again if, if it's the right meter or not. You know, we have to find that out. That'd be our next step.
And we have to build that database to find out whether or not we really need it. And that's what this, this system will do.
Exactly. This is gonna tell us that.
For free.
Well, even, even like a small leak or whatever.
But when you said, you know, build a database, this, the system will tell us how many?
No.
An instrument of how many gallons or?
No.
No.
It'll just tell you that there's water flowing through there.
It'll give you every fifteen seconds, it will record data. Now...
Is that a bell or spinning or no?
Right. If you have a flat-line database, nothing, and then boom, it's got a lot of volume used and then shuts down and nothing.
So essentially, it's just for the graph flow?
Graph flow. It will give us a graph to tell us that there's a, there's a peak right here that means high flow, and then there's flat line. Or if you got a peak and then, you know, small volumes going through there, you know that you're using or expending or losing a low-flow volume that's not being registered on the high-flow meter. So it's just, it's kind of a true way, but it, I believe it's really gonna give us a real true calling to tell us that we need a new meter or an accurate meter that's gonna really tell us what we're using or losing.
Yep, thanks, Amy. Yeah, I wanted to mention that. I remember I...
I'm worried.
Another, under new business, I don't think we have it in our old business, but... Under new business, we have, uh, you have to have notice of voter registration. Maybe, we have picked out a date for that, Amy?
Amy, you want to make, oh, sorry. I'm gonna make a little mystery. I need to make a motion, Mr. D. There is a voter registration day, Village Champlain, Champlain, New York. Whereas the next village general, the next general village election office of the Village Champlain will be held on Wednesday, March eighteenth. And whereas no person shall be entitled to vote at any red village registration whose name does not appear on the register of the elec, of the election district in which he claims to be entitled to vote. Whereas it is the duty of inspectors of election to compare such register of qualified voters to the gist of which they are appointed. And whereas section five sixteen of the election law of the state of New York requires that each village fold, uh, a, a registration day for each village, general village election. Now, there it be, now be it therefore resolved that first registration day for the village shall be held on Saturday, March seventh, two thousand nine. Second, such registration shall be held at the village office eleven oh four Route nine, Main Street, Champlain, New York from twelve noon until five. Third, voting for the forthcoming village election will be conducted at the village office eleven oh four Route nine, Main Street, Champlain, New York on March eighteenth, two thousand nine, between the hours of twelve noon and nine P M. Fourth, at least ten days prior to the registration day, sentence resolution, copy of the subject revolution shall be published and the official newspaper and copy thereof shall be posted in at least one conspicuous public place in such election district. Fifth, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion to approve this resolution?
To make a motion to approve the resolution.
One second. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Any suggestions? We did have something on here in the business under, uh, for, there's some job classifications that I think we need to, uh, we have some new information, so we need to look into that.
Well, we can make a motion tonight if we don't wanna wait till next month to make this. It could, it's a tentative based on...
Yeah, we'd have to get that approved and, uh, also approved by the union, so, uh, do you wanna submit, I mean, that's what they're trying to do, I mean, do you submit this?
Well, we'll need to submit it, but do you wanna go ahead and vote on the approval of this position so that it can get in motion? Otherwise, when civil service sends it back, you have five days. We'd have to have a special meeting. This will prevent us having to have yet another meeting. Although, however, with all the budget meetings coming up, it may be, be necessary. It's up to you guys what you wanna do. I guess we must want an extra meeting.
I'm gonna make a motion to, to approve this classification and then go through a process of the union, follow on this one.
Okay, uh, that, that's the, uh, public works person?
Maintenance person. So I make a motion that we...
Okay. Submit that?
Submit the public works maintenance person, um, and that we approve that position based on the approval from civil service.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, that's all of the business I have. Did you have something, Amy?
Yes, I would like to call an executive session to go over a few, uh, employee issues.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, you, uh, adjourn the meeting and, uh, move to the executive session.
That's right. You're doing your homework.